This is a project which is scheduled for each year within the five-year period 2022, 2023, 24, 25, and 26. The estimated cost right now for the next upcoming year is $25,000. This is to remove the nuisance weeds which are located on the by the boat ramp area, by the center sandbar area and the southern portion of the lake. There we do have an advisory group which is helping, which is overseeing the activities within the lake there. Cost increase from last time is due to the members last year with the issues of glyphosate. We found a hour, found another substitute for glyphosate, which is less harmful to the lake and also to the public, but it costs a little bit more money. The other item we have is the compact tractor which continue requesting to $50,000 request, but the price includes the tractor itself, a trailer, and accessories consisting of a loader, the backhoe attachment, a auger, brush hog. So those add up to the price there. So those are the two items that I have, I'm looking for for capital expenses for the upcoming year. Tractor is be very useful for trail maintenance. It's a smaller one and gets into some of the wider path trails there. Help with erosion issues within the trail, smooth out any damage from ATV activities there, create water bars to kind of get the water going and away from steep hills there. It's for preserve and now a lot of people are familiar with it. Very popular walking site there. The brush hog be extremely helpful with making sure that path stays safe with, especially with all the concerns regarding chicks and stuff like that on high grasses there. We also maintain two smaller fields which are brush hogged on a regular basis there. We have a small hand one would take several days to do that activity with a small handheld brush hog that we have. So that's two things here and open for questions.
Evan on that utility tractor, I have two questions. One, was this in previous years capital request? And secondly, is there utilitarian value with for public works or parking wrecks maintenance staffs?
Yes, it's been requested for at least the past three or four years in capital budget request. And yes, it can be utilized by facilities department, public works, parking wreck. Cause it's a smaller model than any of them have. So it's great, it's great for the smaller finished landscaping activities there.
Okay. Anyone else have questions or comments?
Kevin, I had one, one question. What was the update on the cost when you, when you updated it? Was it a cost update or was it something else?
For which one?
I'm sorry, the tractor.
The tractor, I is $50,000. It's no cost update from last year. I put in what I expected or gave the create the quote, I also added, I continue to see into it.
Okay.
Anyone else? Kevin, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Up next, town property, Steve.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. I can.
Excellent. First on the list is town hall south, re roofing. Be stripping off all the slate and turning into asphalt shingles. Plan is to make it match the town hall. That is for $60,000. With that would be new gutters and redoing some of the exterior trim around the soffits to make it look a little.
You have that listed at 2023?
Twenty-three, yeah, Steve.
Oh, it is?
Yep. Well, that's funny, because all on my stuff it says 2022.
Probably just an error on my end. We can certainly move it.
That's why we have meetings.
Right. Number two, police department boiler upgrade, $90,410. It's removing the larger boilers I was going to replace with two smaller ones. So they only need to come on as needed, which should save with all the fuel and they're more higher efficient condensing boilers. They tied into the building management system, so they'd have full control of them.
Okay.
Next, town hall panic alarms. There is a panic alarm system. I would like to go wireless, which would make it easier moving the desks around as, as need be. We need a new, new panel, which I've already put in a new fire panel. We knew need a new alarm panel and it would be all the, everybody in the building would get a panic switch.
So Steve, on something like that, what's the, is the training? Like, what's the process by which the utility of that is maximized?
We just need to show everybody how to use the button. There's still will be a button attached to the desk. But right now that wire runs down through the floor, it all ties in. You got the possibility of the wire being caught or somebody moving the desk and ripping it all out. So this would all make it wireless. So if you move somebody's desk 10 feet, you don't have to unhook it or worry about damaging anything.
And also this significantly increases our ability to add to the existing number of individuals who have the panic switches, because we don't need to bring wiring to those, those workstations.
Right, and I plan on everybody getting one. This way, everybody's covered.
Right.
Next on my list is replace the old 1999 van with another utility box truck with another lift gate. I think it would help out because we end up moving a lot of stuff. So the lift gate I know on the older truck is starting to get wobbly and unsafe. So this will keep us up to date with another decent truck.
So that, that's a similar question though. That's the, on this spreadsheet, it's listed as a 2024.
That, that one is correct. I was going down in the way she listed them online. They're not all four.
Okay.
Next years, I can do that first.
No, no, it's fine. Just keep going down your list.
Okay, perfect. Another one for next year is replace our own Crown Vic with a little Nissan Rogue. Crown Vic, the air conditioning is gone, the steering is going, the body is going. It's just at the end, life cycle.
Okay. What's that used for, Steve? That's who uses that?
The banking, going to the post office. It's Patrick running around delivering, you know, paper towels and supplies and whatnot to the all the town facilities.
Okay.
Next is the town hall exterior painting, 6,800 bucks. We paint it usually every two years or something, but I figure once in a while it'd probably be nice to have a professional come in and do all the high peaks behind the gutters, everything and clean the building up. Seems to last about 10 years. So I think it's what money worth, well worth being spent.
Okay.
And finally, town hall, town hall south, we paved the parking lot. I've pushed this back. I had put in a new septic pump. I knew I had to cut the parking lot. There was one storm drain that needed fixing around and I didn't know if that was going to continue to erode. So I wanted to have the money there in case we all of a sudden had to repave it. But I talked with the town engineer. I think the parking lot is still in decent enough shape to push it back. So I think I push it back to 2026 and that's.
So Steve, just, just to be clear, in 2022, we have the roof for 60, the police department boiler for 90 and change, the panic alarms, the, the neat, the, and the painting, the, the. Okay.
And the robe, the Nissan.
All right.
Right.
So everything that's listed there and then add the 60,000 over.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Steve, those two vehicles that we mentioned were not in the five-year timeframe last year when we did this, which is fine, but are there any other vehicles that you think might fall into the coming five years that might not be included on here now?
Because the other two trucks are in decent enough shape. I got a van that's relatively new. This would, this would fill up my fleet for a while.
You got four altogether?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Steve? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you all. Have a good day.
Matt, can I just add something quickly?
Certainly.
I'm going back to the wireless security. Part of that is also because we are all usually now only one person in the office at a time as far as staff. Sometimes one or two people on a floor. We have had instances where people come in and, you know, they're upset given the times. So just if you would take that into consideration when you're thinking about that, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Good point.
Yeah, I agree, Karen. Thank you. And just as a, as a sidebar, we are still open for business. You do not need to make an appointment to come in and meet with the assessor, the town clerk or the registrar, or even over at town hall south. We are starting to see with the uptick in COVID cases, some of our other New Haven or the council of government towns going back to appointment only. But that's still, that still does not address the issue of less than full staff here and the safety of the staff. There have been a couple of incidents where we have literally had to ask people to curtail their discussions and move along. So thank you for that point, Karen. All right, item three, health department. Sonia, Sonia Marino, I hope everyone probably has not had the opportunity to meet you. I know most of the board of selectmen has, has had that opportunity via Zoom, but maybe not the, the port of finance. Sonia has stepped into the fire. No question about it. And of late, the, the last four weeks have been torturous. We basically went for five weeks ago, we went from 145 cases to 240 where we are. It was 243 this morning, I think. So Sonia, thanks for all the work you're doing and, and the lack of sleep and family time that you've had to suffer through. But want to tell us a little bit about your capital budget, sort of a disadvantage for you, your first time through this, but you really all, you don't have much on there at this point.
Actually, I don't think I've met anyone before board of selectmen because I wasn't available the other day. Hi, I'm Sonia. How are you? I'm also, I've never done the budget process either through here. So Mary Jane, thank you very much for helping me out and Kim, the building official. The only thing that I had on the five-year capital plan is a car. The reason why we were asking for a car is because the inspector goes out into the field, as do I, into some of the same working, work sites as the building official. And we only have an old Crown Vic and another small compact four-door. Neither one of them are all-wheel drive or four-wheel drive. And Shirley has had, the sanitarian has had, already had one incident where she had to get pushed out of a site because it was, it was not developed and she got stuck. Luckily the installers were there to help her out. So that is my capital budget, just a new car or a car that has four-wheel or all-wheel drive. That's it.
Okay. Yeah. Sonia, I would recommend that you, I know you've priced out something at 26,000. Was that, did you work with public works on that or how did you come up with that number?
Kim gave me a list of cars to look through, Kim, the building official. And I, because I was so slammed with COVID, I really didn't have a lot of time to do research. I just looked at the cars, Toyota, I think Toyota, Honda. And then I think it was a Ford or something. It was anything that was around 25 that were all wheel or four-wheel drive.
Right, and the Nissan Rogue would fall in that, the one that Steve looked at as well, so.
We'll take anything.
Yeah, yeah. One of, one of the considerations that I'm asking all departments, and I probably am remiss, I haven't had this conversation with you. But when it comes to with vehicles, Lou, you ready? We're looking for any opportunity to implement hybrid or electric vehicles. And I understand that there are more choices now relative to four-wheel or all-wheel drive vehicles available in the marketplace. So we'd, we'd, we'd want to take a look at those as, as an alternative.
Absolutely.
So, so the trend we're seeing so far, now here's three vehicles already, a few minutes into the meeting, and none of them were on the five-year request last year. So I'm wondering if there's a way of doing this that sort of is a little more cohesive, like maybe someone could look at vehicles more broadly, all the vehicles, and propose a, a, a plan that would go over five years and maybe even include some sharing where that's appropriate. I remember last year, I think we had the same conversation about getting stuck on sites, but I think it was in connection with the building department last year, I think. Maybe there are things that could be done. I mean, so like here, we just mentioned a small compact four-door that you have available for use now. So that's going to be freed up maybe for somebody else. I don't know, do we have a need for someone to take a comprehensive look at all the vehicles?
So I think that's a good point. And Mary Jane and I will pull together worth, working with the public works folks because they're the ones that have the overall roster and agenda on our vehicles. So we'll, we'll pull something together that shows the, the year, make and model and age, obviously the age of those vehicles. And there is, there is sharing that's done, but there are certain departments where sharing is just not, not applicable. It's, and again, it's not unusual for both the, the health director and the sanitarian to be out doing inspections at the same time throughout, throughout the year. Because they have, they have a division of labor relative to restaurants and then septic and so forth. So there's often a need for folks to, to be out at the same time. And I think the same, same issue exists in the building department. But nonetheless, Sue, it's a, it's a point well taken. If nothing else, it gives us an idea of the age of the vehicles and when we should expect them. And, and you're right, these, you know, there should be, there should be, you know, if you, if, if you need to replace a vehicle today, it should have been on the capital plan at some point earlier. I will say this though, that for a number of years, we were discouraging, discouraging new vehicles. So it, we may be the victim of our own lobby, but that's clearly something we can pull together.
Okay, thank you.
I was gonna, I, I was going to chime in with that, Matt, having been present at these meetings for counting my years as a department head, like about 43 years. And there were many times when the car requests were just off the table. You know, there was no discussion. It was like, no, you're not getting one this year. So that's, that's no blame. And we did have issues, financial issues in 2008 that carried through for a number of years. You know, I'm not saying the decisions were wrong, but we may be just reaching a point where there's just a number of cars that we, you know, some of these are 20 years old, you know, and, you know, that it's unfortunate that they're all coming at the same time, but I think it's also legitimate.
But my point is at that, it should have gone somewhere on the next five years. You know, you have it this year, you don't say, oh, just never mind. Right. It's out, so. Yeah.
Okay, Sonia, thank you very much. And back to contact tracing, I suspect.
Nice to meet you.
Next up, billing department, Kim?
Hello, everyone. This is Kim, the building department. And I also requesting a vehicle because I also have an inspector that comes in on Fridays and we have several projects that's going to be starting before the end of this year and early next year that we're going to probably have two bill, two inspectors out, myself and another one. And right now we're down to one car. The Crown Vic that I had before has expired and the car that I'm currently driving makes a lot of noise and shakes and my inspector has mentioned it several times that he doesn't feel safe actually driving it also. So that's one of the requests for another vehicle. I did speak to the parks department regarding what type of vehicle. He did mention a Nissan Rogue. Unfortunately, that type of car is quite low. I did speak with, I know Janice Plazek has one and she said she wouldn't even advise it, you know, because of the terrain and a lot of the work that we do, that car will be too low of a vehicle for something that I'd be doing with new construction. We have several new projects coming along that are going to be starting soon.
Okay. So do you have the five-year there? Was there anything for building department on the five-year?
No, no.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Here's, here's something that just came across on a pink note. For those of you that don't know, pink notes, that's our inter-office messaging system. And Kevin McGee has reminded me that one of the issues with the request for cars being as prevalent as they are is that they were no longer getting the hand-me-downs from the police department. And I think you've heard Crown Vic mentioned a couple of times in, in the past 10 or 15 minutes. And that's where those cars come from. And in, in fact, even the SUVs, I believe Kim's black SUV is, is a hand-me-down. The vehicle I'm driving from police is a hand-me-down. So, you know, that now that we are no longer able to be utilizing those vehicles, it's pushing, pushing us into a different type of purchasing arrangement, but. So those are, those are being traded in, Matt? The police?
They mostly are being traded in or they're being mothballed, basically sold for salvage.
Because in some ways that, if the police, police, a former police vehicle would be perfect because it's the Explorer, it's obviously higher off the ground, a little more durable. But if they're, if they're being ground to a nubbin by the police, maybe that's not an answer. But if there's any life left in one or two or three, some of those might be an answer.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything further for Kim? Thank you very much, Kim.
Have a good day.
Matt, just so you know, I've been working with Charles to try to get him in the meeting. He's been having issues too.
Yeah, I, I'd seen something on that. Can he call in?
I'm going to have him call me now, see if I can get him in.
Okay, let's move along to planning and zoning.
Hey, there we go.
George, how are you?
I'm, I'm good. I'm also, I'm requesting a car. Can you hear me?
Yep, got you.
Okay. This is somewhat repetitive of what you've just heard, but we're requesting a $30,000, which is what we think the budget price would be for a four-wheel drive vehicle with a little bit better clearance than the Nissan Rogue. We want to use that vehicle to replace a hand-me-down from the police department. We're currently using a Ford Expedition with 119,000 miles and it makes quite a number of groaning and other noises when you drive around with it. The zoning enforcement officer doesn't feel real confident in its functionality and we believe it's time to replace it. So that's, that's our request. Apologize to Sue for not having thought of this a couple of years ago, but.
Good company.
Yes, I think we're all in that same boat. $30,000 price came off of the state bid list for vehicles that are, need our threshold. If we want to go with a hybrid and we did look at that possibility for this, for a similarly constituted vehicle, it's going to be a little bit higher priced. And that may be something that we would review sort of systematically with, as you've been suggesting, to replace a number of the vehicles that you're contemplating.
Good. Thank you, George. Any, any further questions? Hearing none. Thank you, George. Item six, golf course. What do we have on? Do we have Ted and/or the commission?
Yeah, Teddy's there.
All right.
Basically I have one item, replacing a 15-year-old big blower which takes care of all the leaves of the golf course. We basically lost it the last couple of weeks for basically use of the parts. And also help me for the labor, most of our work is done with backpack blowers on it. So if we can get a bigger blower in here, we can get it, get the job done and more time consuming and also save on labor. That's basically the big one I have. And I would like to appreciate thanking the selectmen. I guess we got the parking lot somewhat on a go, correct?
Correct, correct. Ted, thank you for your explanation on the, on the blower. We also had a couple of other items under the 22 budget. That was a mower replaces the 1994 Greens mower for 12,000 and a Toro 2300 reel master replacing a 20-year-old Toro. Are those, are you saying those are not critical for this year?
Yeah, basically we're just going to push those back. I mean, our main thing was the parking lot. And then, you know, we just basically wanted to put in for a blower down, you know, down the road. If we can't get it next year, we get the following year.
Okay. All right, so it sounds, it sounds like you've got some flexibility with the capital then.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other, any questions? No. Thanks, Ted.
You're welcome.
All right, next up, library. I'm assuming Rob is online? Or hoping he is? There?
Yeah, the, the agenda has an estimated time of 2:30 at this point. So it's, so we're running ahead of schedule.
Well, then that may be answered.
If you want to switch and take somebody that's on the line, I see Mike Shog is on.
Yep. That works. Oh, Janice? You waving?
Janice, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's jump to, was, is Tony on for information systems?
It's going to be me, so we can do that at the end. Or I can do it anytime.
That's fine. All right. Janice, you're on.
Okay. All right, so I'll, I'll go through the, the 2022 capital projects that are being discussed for funding. If you recall, we've been funding the road improvements for $500,000. I believe we started last year and been looking to build up some funding to be able to, to, to get some paving done throughout town for various roads and projects, working with the public works department to try and address some, some deficiencies in some of our roads on a year-to-year basis. The next item is the Lake Wanapau Dam. There's some challenges with that dam currently structurally. I've did a preliminary inspection, we're due for a formal inspection submission to Connecticut Deep in, I believe in March of 2021. And it is starting to leak quite a bit as well as have some undermining and some leaning of the, the stones. It's not a high dam, but it obviously is an important dam. And then reviewing the plan that was done, I believe back in 2009, there was a study done for Lake Wanapau, which included replacement of the dam, replacement of the culverts for the outlet of the, the dam under lake and that, that weird intersection there, as well as contemplating dredging the dam. Because as you know, there's some shallowness on the lower end of the dam due to buildup of sediments as well as a lot of weed growth. So how that gets rolled into a dam replacement project is still to be discussed and permitted and all that. But I think we need to get underway with some engineering studies and environmental studies to move forward to be prepared for, you know, repair or replacement more than likely of this dam in the near future. As you can see, I forecasted out some bigger numbers for the actual construction work. So for that, I was looking for $300,000 in funding for the Lake Wanapau Dam. Sidewalks, the annual $50,000 that we've been getting for the past couple of years at least in order to maintain our current sidewalks. It's typically used to replace, you know, trip and fall hazards and problem areas that I get calls and complaints on or we know exist and we need to address so that we don't have any problems as well as some compliance. as well as some compliance with handicap accessibility and things like that. So that's an ongoing expenditure that we typically have. This year, it was in my five-year plan last year, and in prior years as well, to start building up a little bit towards funding sidewalk expansion along Route 1 West. This is to try and bring sidewalks further to the west. Where they end right now is basically 3-mile course. And my understanding is to try and really extend them out as far as we can, at least maybe to Bishop's or a little further, in order to make that connection into, into town. And then there's other areas of sidewalk we may want to look at in filling the west of Exit 57 on the true Route 1 West section of town, where we've started to get some of the development in that area to include sidewalk. So we could see if there's any need for fill-ins of any of those sections as well. And as you can see, that was a request that's gonna be a multi-year request for two years for a total of $100,000. So Route 77 pedestrian improvements, that project is, is, is already funded. It's just to make you aware that it's existing. Me and Mary Jane had a discussion to really try and identify all the ongoing capital projects. And you could see here, it's basically being funded by a grant through the federal government, and the town is responsible for the 20% match. And that, I believe, was covered under the recent transfer that was approved recently for the remaining funds from last year for that 20% match the town's responsible for. And this will extend the sidewalks from where they end, just north of Adams Middle School, up to Hubbard Road. And then sidewalk expansion, Boston Street. We have a grant already to the tune of about $287,000. It's a connectivity grant. And we're, we're gonna be shy on that grant to really bring the sidewalks, based on our estimates, out to Route 1. A couple of challenges we have is there's a tidal creek culvert that needs to be extended in order to cross along Boston Street. That's gonna be challenging for a number of reasons, cost as well as permitting. And then we have some areas of embankment and such that we have to address as we get closer to Route 1. So our estimates are the cost of the project is $406,000, but we only have 286. But I believe those funds, extra funds, were also part of that recent transfer from fun, funds remaining from last year to cover that shortfall we expect in that project. And then finally, Nut Plains Road reconstruction. That is a lotsip-funded program. We're still awaiting a commitment to fund from DOT. We've had our preliminary design into them. And they've had some comments. We've responded. We're getting them a little more information. So we're expecting to be able to construct that next year. But that will, the construction costs are entirely funded through that lotsip grant that's administered through the COG. And then, if you'd like, I can touch on some of the future projects, if you like, or.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's good for everyone to get an understanding of what's coming down the pike here.
Okay, so then, as you can see, we're, we are forecasting out for the road improvements to continue that for the next, for three years. We already did one year of $500,000. And then the next project would be Chimney Corners Coastal Resilience. The town used coastal roads funds to do a stub, a study, which we've done a preliminary study of Chimney Corners, as well as Falcon Road, which is down at the bottom on this list. And working with the Satums Head Association, and we hired race consultant engineers. And they've studied alternatives for resilience for both locations. Chimney Corners Road, we have a number of residences, as well as the Yacht Club, that are challenged with access due to frequent flooding of the road. The road sits as low as elevation four. And so, you know, they'll have a wind and a high tide, and they won't be able to get to their homes. So it's a, a problem that we do need to address, similar to what was done over on Old Quarry and Tuttle's Point Road, where, you know, access to homes was challenging because of the low-lying roadway. And we have completed the preliminary study, and we had a public outreach meeting recently. We've gotten some good feedback, and it's looking like it would more, more than likely be a simple road elevation project. But we did look at other concepts, such as a flood wall or flood berm as alternatives. But probably the most straightforward and cost-effective feasible project is the true road elevation project. And so we're looking to fund that project to allow for resilience and improved access to those homes. And then Falcon Road was also, as you know, we've had a number of instances where that road's been damaged due to wave action. It's, there's an old stone wall, seawall that's there, that doesn't have a very deep foundation, and it's, you know, subject to, to damage. And it's been a problem, as well as it's low-lying and, you know, experiences a lot of wave wash, as well as sand. So we, in studying this, have looked at a number of alternatives. One is to replace the wall with a more resilient wall with a slight road elevation. We're also looking at revetments as an alternative. And we're working with the, the community and, and, and trying to determine which would be the best alternative to move forward with on that one. The opportunity there for that road is that it is a collector road through the functional classification through DOT. So we are putting that forth through, for funding from COG for a lotsip program, project. We'll be working with COG, I think at their next meeting, for setting the priorities as to what funding's gonna be available for what projects. And we're hoping that Falcon Road will be included. So the exact year of funding availability, I'm not exactly sure, but this is what I put in for with them. And then above that is the Goose Lane Road reconstruction. And that's also a lotsip-funded project. We have had survey completed on that roadway. We're awaiting the final survey so that internally, the assistant engineer can get started on the design. Because we own the design on all the lotsip programs, but the construction is funded through the grant. So we're hopeful to get that survey in soon and get working on the design so that I'll be ready for construction in 2023. Once we have a preliminary design done, we'll submit to DOT for a commitment to fund. And then we can move forward with public outreach and permitting and all that for that as well. So that would be basically from just north of I-95 up to where the Nut Plains Road lotsip program project would end. We would basically end up with that entire corridor paved over a couple of year period. It's not just paved, it's gonna be reconstructed. We have a number of problems, particularly with drainage on both Nut Plains and Goose Lane, that the reconstruction will help solve those problems and result in a better roadway. So that's 2023. 2024 includes the paving and the sidewalks, and also the Quantapog Dam construction cost, which I've, you know, based on this study that was done in 2009, put in the estimate of about $3.5 million. And again, the scope of that project is gonna determine true cost, whether there's the, the desire to dredge. Will, will play, play a huge role in the costs of that project. Because that's where actually a lot of the cost really lies, is in the dredging cost, at least based on the study that was done in 2009. And then going forward, we pushed out Bearhouse Hill Road Bridge Masonry, Masonry Repairs and Deck Replacement of 150 to 2025. That might, that might be, that's, might be funded through low SIP, and it's not really a pressing priority right now. It seems to be holding up fine. It's really a more of a pedestrian bridge and emergency access bridge into the open space. So it's holding up to wait until 2025 at the, at the very least. And then the other projects that we pushed out even further are the Nut Plains Road West Expansion of Route 77, and the Bullard Drive Extension of Route 77 at Baldwin Middle School. Both those projects have been contemplated for many years, and were part of the transportation plan. And while I believe one may have more merits than the other, or both maybe is, have high merits, one has, they both have challenges because they have either a river crossing or a significant wetland crossing. Nut Plains Road has the, the challenge of, of a lot of private property acquisition required to do that road as well. So that really needs to be looked at, and we're hoping to have that included in the, the complete streets projects that we're kicking off soon, and really looking at whether the circulation is still one of the priorities that we should consider and contemplate making those extensions in the future.
Thank you, Janice. Just a quick question on the Lake Quantapog Dam. Obviously, the, the engineering money is probably gonna be well-spent. The question I have is a longer term on the project itself. There, there is significant discussion about who actually really owns that lake and who has control of that lake. As I think most of you know, there's a state boat launch at the northern end of the lake. And we, we've had some battles with them relative to who has responsibility for managing the lake. Is there an opportunity for us to get either state or federal funding for a project like that with a dam? Maybe Army Corps, you know, some, some, some other type of funding?
I would hope so, but I, I can't tell you for sure. I know what that funding source is myself. And that's usually what you'll, you know, when you hire consultants to help you with these things, or they're better experts at these things, and hopefully can find us some money. I just don't, I'm not overly aware of one. It's a, it's a Class B hazard dam. It's not a high-hazard dam. Like, like the, like the RWA dams in town are a higher hazard. They would cause more damage to life and property than, believe it or not, the Quantapog Dam, if it were, should, should break. So it's classification. I'm not sure how, how much, what funding sources would be out there for it, quite frankly. But we'll, we'll definitely explore them.
Thank you. All right, questions?
Yes, I had a question. Excuse me if this is a dumb question. I think I'm better at morning meetings than afternoon meetings, but anyway, I'll try. In the 2022 line, you listed various funding sources, bond, general fund, grant, lotsip, and low SIP. So if we granted everything, if everything in that line came to pass, new money, quote unquote, from the town would be the first four items? The $500,000, the $300,000, and the $50,000? And then the, yeah, and then, and then I know there's some, some town money under the grants, but you said that's already, that already exists.
Right, that's correct. We've already funded those.
So when, when we look at the bottom line of $4,106,000, that's not all.
That's not a request.
New money.
No, that's, those are the project, total project costs, yes.
And that's the case in all five years, really. I mean, some is, some isn't. Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Sandy, Sandy, if you were to look in the summary page at the beginning of the agenda, at the very end of that, it kind of outlines general fund grants, bonding, and the general fund line is what we're really seeking funding for. As Janice said, we did have a discussion on whether or not to bring all of these forward. We felt it was better to put them on the table so that everybody knew that they were going forward. It was just a matter of the, the funding would not be needed from the general fund.
Okay, no, that's, that, I'm, it's fine. I just, okay, and thank you for that. I'll, yeah, that other page will probably be clearer for me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else of Janice? Any other questions?
A quick question regarding the money that was brought from surplus to the fund balance that was committed to road repair and sidewalks. Could there be a little bit of clarification on how that would play into this? And, and is that part of the money that we're talking about, that's in that designated fund? That we did last month, the 475?
Yeah, so it's part of the sidewalk expansion for Boston Street. I believe it was $121,000 was allocated from those funds. And then the Route 77 pedestrian improvements, I don't, I apologize, I don't have that in front of me, but the local match for that was included, which I want to say was in the order of 300, 300,000 and change, I think.
Yeah.
And then, I think that's, I think that's it for, for those two, for 2022.
Yeah, the fund balance committed to road repair and sidewalks was 475. And then there was a separate allocation for 525 for coastal resilience, which would cover the, the work for Chimney Corners and Falcon Road. So your, 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 your supposition was correct, Matt.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Let's go back to that for a second. So the grand total for 2022 from general fund, the 2.4 million, that does, does or does not include amounts already in fund balance?
It does, right?
Are you looking at the summary sheet?
I'm looking at the summary sheet, yeah.
I don't have the summary sheet, so I apologize.
Oh, no, that, no. Yeah, this is all.
No, the, the money set aside in fund balance is not in those numbers.
Okay, so.
To be on top of.
So if we were to go ahead with all of these, we'd be looking for the whole 2.4 out of next year's.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
That's cumulative, all departments.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Janice, thank you very much for that very detailed explanation.
You're welcome.
All right, has Rob made it on to? Charlie, welcome back, welcome back in.
Yes, I'm here whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Rob. You're on.
Okay, so really, it's just two simple additional requests to what's already there. I'll start with the, what I try to ask for every year, which is computer replacement technology and hardware. I'll start by just pointing out that we did lose that in this year's budget due to cuts during the last budget cycle. So we're a year off of this schedule. And the other point I like to make at the beginning is, this request is always for really what I like to call the nuts and bolts technology for, that runs the library. This is not the type of stuff that the friends pay for. This is not 3D printers and virtual reality goggles and things of that nature. It's not laptops that we use for computer classes or display screens. This is just like the computer that the person that's circulating is using to check out a book. And this is the hardwired computer that the public is using when they come in to access the internet or use, you know, Microsoft or, or things like that. So there's 78 computers currently in the library of that nature. Forty-one of them are for public use, 29 are for staff use, and eight are for sort of special purposes, like the HVAC computer, the computer that monitors the print management software, a couple of print release terminals, things like that. It also includes things like, we have 14 wireless access points and a dozen receipt printers and barcode scanners, and just all the things that make the basic library functions happen. So if I were to replace all of this at once, the bill would probably be between $75,000 and $80,000. On the approach that we've taken, and this is all through libraries online, the consortium that we're a part of, is to just do it incrementally a little bit every year. And that, that seems to work the best. We're able to target what we're most in need of in that given year and gives us some flexibility. It also gives us a relationship with libraries online, which is just, you know, amazing computer service. They have same-day service for like a important staff terminable, and next-day service for a public terminal. They take care of all the warranties. They take care of all, you know, all the software issues. So it's, it's a really, it's a good deal for us. So I am adding under the year 2026, an additional request of $10,000 for this line for computer replacement. Now, as always, I'm hoping, you know, we, we're looking. As always, I'm hoping, you know, we, we're looking at different trends. This number could shrink as we use cheaper models or find better solutions. But given the uncertainty of this year, I'm just trying to play conservatively and just, you know, assuming. Something weird might come up between now and then. I want to have the ten thousand dollars there in just in case. The only other addition is I added a third year. In twenty twenty six to the carpet replacement schedule. Rather than do one massive building wide carpet replacement, we're trying to target the most trafficked areas starting in twenty twenty four. This carpet was laid down during the renovation, which has been twelve years ago. It's it's held up pretty well, but it's certain areas are showing some wear and tear. So the idea would be we start with the with the worst area, which would be the children's play area, which for obvious reasons is the most beat up. Then the teen area, then the meeting room and reference area. And then I think we'd be in good shape for a while. So those are really the only new requests. The only big ticket item I'd like to remind everyone of is. Next year, twenty twenty two, we do have that ninety nine thousand five hundred dollars set aside to replace the slate roof. On the old part of the library, which is, I think, eighty seven years old or something like that. It's, it gets inspected every year. It seems to be holding up well, but he's, you know, our advisor just keeps reminding me like, you know, it's that needs to get on the schedule. I'd like to keep it in next year. Once that's done, I feel like I can, you know, retire with a clean conscience for my successor. That's really the the last real big ticket item I think that we'll have. I mean, there'll be plenty of little stuff, but. That's the only thing in the sort of six figure. Area that I I can anticipate ever happening, really. So if we can cut that off and keep our hardware up and running. The other thing I'll just point out about this hardware is. You know. This has been an interesting time for libraries as for everyone. One of the services that I think we really do distinguish ourselves at is technical assistance. Lots of libraries do it. I really think we are one of the best at doing that. And I think we're one of the only libraries in the state that's continuing to do it even during the pandemic. So, you know. Just today, and this is often like unglamorous work. It's not the kind of thing like of the picture of the kids around the three D printer. This is like, you know, helping a senior citizen reset their password for the fourth time in a month. This is, you know, helping some senior citizen who thought they lost all their pictures on their phone and it just slowly but surely walking them through these really. What's what to them is terrifying, but what to do with our technicians is not. It, I keep pointing out the senior citizens because that's really who it is. And this is sort of a population that can't be served by a Zoom. I shouldn't say they can't be. They can't be quite as effectively. So we still have. People dropping by the library for this technical assistance every day. And it's just a really big deal to be able to have up to date hardware. Help them get back on their feet, especially when they're so isolated in every other regard. And then the very last point I'll make out is we did have a lot of laptops through the friends for our computer classes. We loaned six of those out to the town to help with the the remote transition. Which the town still has, so I'm not, I'm not saying anything, but you know, at some point we'll need those back, just while I have everyone's attention, but that's a discussion for later.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone have any questions?
I, Rob, the ninety nine thousand dollars for the slate roof, which I'm familiar with as well. That's if we put real slate back, is that correct?
No, that's, that's for faux slate.
That's for the faux slate.
Was more the ballpark of a quarter of a million, I think.
Okay. Okay.
I believe the original quote was. A little over eighty for the actual faux slate, and there was a contingency, assuming there's going to be about seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars of. Carpentry necessary, just quite likely.
Right, and there have over the years been leaks with where the two chimney. To do the chimneys from the nineteen thirty three building are, so, okay, thank you.
And and the faux slate is some sort of composite?
Yes.
That this looks thick, it looks like a slate roof?
Yes, it's the same material that if you look at the the sort of vertical edge, the, what do you call it, the parapet that goes around the building, that is faux slate currently. It would match that. Now, I I still have to get that officially passed by the historic. I've spoken to them informally, and they said that's likely to be fine, but that would still be, need to be, you know, officially granted.
Okay.
Do you know offhand the life of the faux slate?
Yeah. I was told fifty years.
Fifty, okay, that's pretty good.
That is pretty good. Good. Anything further? Rob, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mary Jane, we'll package you in information systems in when we do finance at the end. Unless you want to go now, your call.
No, I I can wait till the end or whatever.
Thank you.
I'd rather take the people that are on the call.
Yep. Thank you. All right, Public Works, Tom. Good afternoon. You're, Tom, you're on mute. You gotta, you need to unmute.
Call the library, they'll help you.
Okay. All right, you hear me now?
We got you.
Okay. All right. Looking for a grapple attachment for the one oh four loader. We have one that we borrowed from Killenworth, and we've been using it especially during those storms that we had. It's very effective. Time wise and safety wise. But it is, that is Killenworth that I borrowed. So we're looking for one for one oh four, our smaller loader, and. I'll keep that other one as long as I can. So that's fifteen thousand dollar estimate for that. And I'm looking for that, you know, two thousand twenty two. Then we have. The need for two Wassa nine foot plows for a total of eighteen thousand dollars. We're short on plows in the nine foot for the secondary trucks. There is damage to some of them that we're using now, and I don't really have a backup, so that's why I'm asking for that. And that would be for two thousand twenty two. The mobile truck lifts, we have four, we have six already that we're using within the bays there that, these things are awesome. They're able to pick up a dump truck. And we can, this way, we can move them from bay to bay or from garage to garage. We noticed that we have another bay that with with the the new mechanics that we kind of need. To shift them over to, so we'd like to purchase four more of those at a cost of forty four thousand. These are are better too, because if we ever did move from here. They're mobile, they they can go right to the next place that we're at. So that that there is, I I put out two thousand twenty two, but that could be moved further up if we had to. Bobcat loader attachment. This is a milling machine that attached, they just came out with. It'll mill down to six inches. It's. Also has a fifteen degree pitch on it and oscillates from left to right. It's self leveling, so when, once you set it down, you run the machine, everything's by by a button on the machine. Really impressive. I've been looking for something like this where our costs wouldn't be that high. Because there's a lot of spots, instead of digging out the whole pavement, I'd rather mill it. And make an an overlap that would hold the patch better. And also, if you notice from town, the center line joints have failed quite a bit. This would be a perfect machine for that. Perfect first machine for around catch basins and making match points and some of the gutters that we want to fix. So instead of having a full fledged. You know, cutting the whole thing out and redigging everything. Sometimes the pavement is not in bad shape, it's the the top coat that's in bad shape. We'd be able to mill it down to the binder and save the town money. And also, you know, make it our work a lot easier and a lot quicker. So that's nineteen thousand. I was looking at two thousand twenty three because I actually would like to test this thing out. And and see what what it was like, but the reviews are great on it.
So, excuse, so Tom, you're, you're leaving it in twenty twenty three, or you wanted to push it over to twenty twenty two?
I'm gonna leave it in twenty twenty three. This will give me an option to take a look at it. And see if it's what, what we're thinking about. But this way, owning it, as we found out with the roller, is much more, is much better than. Trying to get it when everybody else is trying to get it at the same time, and sometimes with the roller, we couldn't get it, and we had, we had to go to all these different vendors. So, you know, this is a machine that you will use for years, years going on, and it's a very useful machine. And it's attachment to a machine I already have. So I I think it's definitely worthwhile, because the cost of tilt con alone is. With a bigger miller, it's a little bit bigger. It's called a barko miller. They're running about. Three seventy five an hour to to run those things, and that's, you know, that's just throwing away money afterwards, so. This would allow us a little bit of freedom. Also looking for a curb machine because our current one is over thirty years old and. Actual auger system starting to wear out, and not only that, parts and stuff like that for it. So this new machine is, would have accessibility on both sides of the machine. So sometimes we have to go downhill or whatever, opposite with the way we want it to work, because it's only one sided our machine now. This one, I'd be able to work off both sides. We would need two new molds for it. Like I said, the other one is over thirty years old. And that's eleven thousand, and that's two thousand twenty three. Forklift, we have a used forklift at this point. It gets used quite a bit between us and Park and Rick over here. The problem with it is, it's hard rubber tires, and it's only good for a solid surface, so you can't even get off the pavement at all. And it's limited as far as its strength, as far as the picking up capacity. So we're looking for a little bit bigger one that still would be functional for around here. With pneumatic tires on it, you know, so the air tires like that, so that, and with a little bit more lifting capability. So it give us more access points from around here that we can work. That's thirty thousand dollars. I put it as two thousand twenty two, but again, that could be moved. It's not. Dire necessity at this point. And the last thing, that's one of the biggest things, I don't know if Janice mentioned it. But. The fuel tanks here are at the, at the end of their life expectancy, supposedly. So their thirty years is the of the steel tank is is the life expectancy of it, so. They're gonna, DP will probably be asking us to remove these. Pretty soon. I think where they were putting it in ninety one, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm hoping there's a grace period, and I'm also hoping that maybe we can extend the time. I talked to Janice about that too with DP. If we meet certain, you know, specs that maybe we can push it off a little bit longer. Especially seeing that we're thinking about moving from, the problem with the ground. And this would be a big project, because the coordination would have to be. And getting a new one in, and we still don't know where we would put it here, because there's not a lot of room here. And then after that, we, I have to reroute traffic, and then we'd have to take the old tanks out. So I've been looking, I I called the state, I, they haven't got back to me. We called the company that does it. They haven't got back to me yet as far as the price. My estimation then would be roughly around four hundred thousand dollars to do to do all this work. So that is something that I was also looking at two thousand twenty two, because of the immediacy of. The tanks' lives. So again, I had to put some kind of number in there. It's going to vary according to where we put these. And if we have to go underground again, I mean, it's, there's, this is a big project.
Is there any way, Tom, any way of getting? Not just like the chart, like what the life sand is, but to have, I mean, this is a circumstance for four hundred thousand dollars, where it would be worth it to get. An an opinion as to what the integrity of these things really is.
Yes, I I totally agree with you, and in talking with about with Janice and Ralph, we were talking about. We should bring in the guy that inspects the tanks. Along with the guy that puts them in. The state just put them in. That's why I was trying to get a price, some kind of price from the state. And so what theirs cost was, but there, there's no answer over there, no matter what, they're never there, and it's no answer, so. And then the company that did it, Rizzo, we were trying to get. An estimate from them, and they haven't got back to me yet either. So.
They have to be replaced underground, given the circumstances of maybe the lifespan of the facility. Isn't there some way of putting above ground tanks if we have to do them and then? Move them if we can, or I mean, aren't there some options here?
Yes, we, the thought is to put them above ground. So that this way, in the, in the exchange, it'd be, put the new ones in first. Then I'd have to change the access point over here, and then we would be able to take the old ones out. So a little logistics there, but. The bottom line is, I'm trying, you know, I talked to Janice, because when we were talking about DP, maybe they can give us some kind of extension on these tanks, because. These tanks have had no real issues. They've met the, on the test, the pressure test, they've, they've, they've been fine. And even Janice said there's tests, the tanks that they've taken out. That once they took them out, they wish they never did, because there was nothing wrong with them. These are double wall steel tanks, so if there was any breach, there's a sensor in the middle of those walls. And so far, every time that we've tested, there, there has not been any breaches, any issues whatsoever. The only issue we ever had was. There's corrosion on the top plate, the access panel going in, so we had to have that fixed. But that's something that, because it was right at ground level and and had water there a lot, that's the reason why that happened. But the tank itself. Both tanks have been, you know. Worried free. I mean, they've, they've been great, so I would think that. Getting those two people together, maybe we can come up with something where we're able to extend the time. Yeah. You know, it'd be great if we go another five years, you know.
We don't, we don't have a lot of time now, but, you know, our, our own state senator is deeply involved with environmental issues, and maybe she can. Nudge the the department to get back to you more quickly, you know, on the answer.
Right.
You're seeking.
Well, one of the problems is, there's, there's specific requirements for extending the life of the tank. And some of the challenges are, we don't, we don't have good plans on how it was installed, and if some of these things were included in the installation, so. We're gonna work, we, you know, reach out to the tank installers to see if we can confirm some of these. There's like strike plates that are required. I have no as built to know for sure they were installed. And so if we can prove these things are in place, then there is a program through deep to be able to extend the life, but we're not sure we're going to be able to qualify for that, but we will seek that out first. And the nice thing, like Tom said, is if we get above ground tanks. Number one, you know, no longer have all the monitoring and liabilities of an underground tank. But also, if the facility should move, you could, you can relocate above ground tanks easily.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Just a, just a word of caution, moving tanks might not be as easy as it sounds. Because you, that process, that process would probably take more than a couple of days, right? And so how would you, how would you fuel and gas your own vehicles during that interim timeframe, you know?
Well, what you do is, I've run across this problem when we had our tank red tagged and branford and shut down, is. You work out a deal with a local vendor or something to utilize for a short term fueling at, at a. You know, a gas station or something like that. That's pretty much what you have to do.
Right. Or, or, or with our provider of fuel, which is located right here in town.
But I don't think that they can dispense it like a gas station can. There's, yeah. You have to go to.
There's a solution.
Yeah.
Gotcha. All right, and one of the other. Matt, just, Matt. Go ahead.
One of the other challenges here, I think, needs to be, needs to be. Clear is, we are asking the regulators. For, for information and advice on our, on the longevity of our devices. If we get the wrong answer. We get the wrong answer, and we immediately have to deal with it. That's part of the challenge with using the regulators as our expert opinion. So Janice, whatever we can do to find out that the the information that would potentially allow us to get that extension. And then perhaps even bring in, as Lou suggested, our own outside experts as opposed to relying on deep to do that for us.
Yeah, no, we're better off using our own vendor to make those, these determinations if we're going to qualify before we approach deep. Yep.
All right, Tom, would you have, you had more? All right, Tom, would you have, uh, you had more? You had a couple of.
Nope, that's it. Okay, yeah, that, those are already been. You're breaking up, Matt.
Go ahead, Tom, you, you had some trucks and a sweeper also in that list?
Yes, uh, that, that's on, was on the previous list there that we had uh two trucks, two ten-wheelers and a pickup truck. The following year, uh, next year. And then we also have a sweeper the year after that. That we were looking at, and then the various uh drainage, we continue on to twenty-five thousand dollars every year for various drainage projects that we do. That, that's a continuation year after year.
On the, on the two dump trucks and the pickup truck, they're all under twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
So do you have the make and model of what they're replaced? Not the, not the, I'm sorry, not the make, but the, the, how old are the ones they're replacing? I guess that's what I'm trying to ask.
Okay, uh, I think uh, I don't have that information as far as that. But it's the forty-six truck is being replaced. And I know that they're within seventeen years, whatever like that. And then uh the one-ten truck after that is the one uh to be replaced. That, they're both ten-wheel dump trucks.
Okay.
But I don't have uh, uh, they're at the end of their lives. I mean, I just don't have a date on that, sorry.
That's okay.
You can, you can follow up with that, we can get that info.
Okay.
Any uh, any more questions for Tom in public work? No, Tom, thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, um, Park and Rec, Rick, are you on? Do we see Rick?
Again, we're ahead of schedule, so I will uh email him like I did the others.
Okay.
Next up would be Mike, however.
Mike, you wanna do uh communications and fire? I see you just unmuted and uh, and brought your video back, Mike.
Sorry about that.
Don't worry about it. Communications first, Mike?
Yeah, we'll go through communications first. I have uh Charlie and Jay are with me here. Wanty, any questions that come up for communications? So we have a two uh, well, one in the twenty-two or two for the twenty-two budget for communications. One is the um, radio systems UPS switch upgrade, uh, which is IT-related. And this system backs up while the radio sites and infrastructure for all of our public safety communications. And that's for thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And the second one is the radio systems upgrade FD and PD. So uh, uh, both upgrades and maintenance for our current radio system for police, fire and public works with our radio vendor.
All right, and um, any questions uh on those two items? Are we at uh, we at a critical juncture for uh those upgrades?
Oh, Jay, are we at a critical, critical?
Yeah, a lot of the stuff's end of life, so we kinda need, especially with the UPSs.
So the UPS, the UPS stuff is uh end-of-service life. So that's something that, you know, in the event we lose power or power glitches between uh, when we do lose power to generator backup, it keeps the equipment live and there's no hard shutdowns of any of the equipment. Um, as that UPS equipment ages, that is, and the switches are also attached to that.
Well, the switches are end of life too.
They're end of life.
The switch, okay, the end of li- the end of life is the right answer uh for an old uh technology guy. So um, that uh, that, that makes sense to me. And in terms of the radio system upgrades, is this a timing issue? Is it uh, or has that also got some uh?
It's uh the same as the switches, uh, that, there's obviously, there's a, there's an IT component to our radio system and there's also a radio component. I know it's crazy, but a lot more things are IT-based where uh Jay is uh taking on a lot of roles where we're not paying a vendor for those things. And the actual radio equipment side of those end-of-service life on those same pieces and components that pertain to the radio system. So our radio vendor is working on more radio stuff and our IT, public safety IT position is doing a lot more in-house work uh when he's here every day.
Gotcha. Okay, anybody else have questions for uh, for Mike on communications? Nope, thank you, Mike, uh, I wanna move on to fire, please.
Sure. Let me just, uh, you wanna go down our list for everything in the. Okay, so uh, first item uh going down for project, uh, replacement staff vehicle, uh, that's for twenty twenty-three. Um, we also have, I'll go down too, we also have a, the replacement of deputy fire marshal vehicle. Both of those are spaced out on, based on our replacement vehicle cycle. So uh fifty thousand, we've uh continued last year, that's what we had. So we, that's a continuous, we've been on target with uh the price of the vehicle uh using state contract pricing and also to add the radio equipment. So uh, we've been consistently able to hold that number without, um, you know, we've, we've been doing okay with that number. Technical rescue equipment that uh is for replacement, uh, let's say replacement of existing equipment and gear. Uh, for example, uh, I think in, in the uh project proposal, we have dive equipment that's coming up on end-of-service life. And I included a quote in there. Um, this, like many of our projects, uh, we also um, every year entertain uh, um, federal and regional grant money. So the goal is to uh, you know, any way we could offset the cost, just like we recently did with SCBA. This money, we're also looking to allocate in different grants, federal grants for um, to offset the cost. But in the event that we don't get the grant, uh, we're gonna have to budget uh based on expiring equipment. And uh, those are predominantly a focus around NFPA standards for ten-year end-of-service life uh for equipment. Uh, defibrillator EKG monitors uh are defibrillators. Those are on all of the ambulances and uh the rescue truck for uh obviously patient care. Those are also, we uh received notice from the manufacturer that uh there, those monitors are coming up on end-of-service life. And they're offering a five-year no-interest option for replacement, either to phase in over time or if you wanted to purchase all of them uh and pay it out over the time with no interest. So that though, we were notified from the manufacturer that our current existing monitors have been in service for a while are um coming to end-of-service life, so getting parts and repairing them is uh getting more challenging. Uh, ambulance remount is uh set out to twenty twenty-four. Uh, that moved, obviously, uh, unfortunately, at a recent accident with the ambulance. And uh, in the process, uh, you, the board of selectmen just approved the um new purchase for this. So that's uh, uh, the unfortunate piece is the accident, the fortunate part is it pushed out the uh replacement cycle. So um, it's good in that sense where it's moved it out uh further uh on the normal replacement cycle of the ambulances. We have two additional bays at fire headquarters, so that was in the budget or this was in capital uh last year. And that's, that's one that um, we're basically, uh, we're trying to, we're um, uh, we need more space, basically. So as long as we've been in here for fifty or sixteen years, we have things that, and equipment that really should be stored inside. And um, looking to, uh, we have preliminary quotes of costs and stuff associated with it. So um, when we get there, we can discuss further. Um, training facility, that's another one that's um, it continues. So that's something that um, every year, uh, to get in a little bit more in-depth about that. That affects our ISO rating. Uh, this past year, we went through an ISO review, there's a twenty-twenty ISO report and a rating schedule. And our um current grade on that, we're still a class three in ISO, which is really good. Um, we are just about a class three, we're at a seventy-point something for our score. Anything below a seventy would knock us back down to a class four. Um, one of the things particular in our evaluation uh this past year is training at fixed fire facilities. Um, the closest fixed fire facility to us is New Haven County Fire School in New Haven, which requires us to uh, in order to meet the ISO requirements, we have to send staffing to New Haven uh multiple times a year for training. So our long-term plan uh and the long-term goal was that having a training facility here, not just uh, the other thought on it was not just fire, but police or the ability to make it useful for any public safety uh group that needs it. So we're looking at uh adding that to uh maintain our ISO, to help maintain our ISO uh ratings. Um, SCBA replacement AFG grant, um, at this year, we received the AFG, we received a federal grant for just about um half a million dollars. So we're in the pro- uh process of that moving forward. That got moved out to twenty twenty-three, but that will most likely disappear. Um, I'm confident that'll disappear too through our federal grant money. So again, the more we can target uh regional and federal grant money to offset any of these costs or um minimize the costs or hopefully eliminate them, uh, that's what we're looking to do. FTIR sampling meter, that was in there, we moved that back. Um, that is one that I'm confident we'll also uh hopefully get on regional grant money. Uh, the region supports us in a lot of ways for hazardous materials responses, and that's one of them. But um, our current meter, our current meter that uh, that meter specifically sampled solids and liquids and uh basically uh gives us ability to quickly identify uh substances at a hazardous materials incident. Um, that is, it, are, that current meter's at end-of-service life and is not being um, made by the manufacturer anymore. Our thermal imaging cameras, uh, we have in twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. So uh, the, the past thermal imaging camera purchases, those we use to, obviously, if uh during a fire, zero visibility uh to look at uh, to be able to find somebody in a house on zero visibility. So that, we have staggered over three years, so we're not just bulk purchasing in one year. So it pushes our replacement cycle over time. Our replacement of the pickup truck, that's uh, also we moved that back last year. That is a nineteen ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-nine with a hundred-plus thousand miles an a- miles. We use that for plowing and upkeep of all the firehouses and that is also at end-of-service life. So we've uh got our use out of that um pickup truck and plow. And then lastly is uh the replacement of engine one-five-four. And that was upgraded based on current pricing of engines. That engine is a nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-six um engine in North Guilford. And it's greater, uh, it's greater than, it's, it's, it's due for replacements, coming up on twenty ninety-six. So, so almost twenty-four years. That one is up for, uh, that, that needs to be replaced. Okay, questions on anything?
So, so, some of the, some of these, like the technical rescue equipment, is that, you have ten thousand every year. Is that gonna be in your operating budget or is, is that, is that proposed for bonding or is that a, another question for another day, Matt? It's, it's, it's capital expenditures to replace equipment, right, Mike?
Correct. So for ex- for example, uh, like a shelf life of our dive equipment, of our uh BCS or air tanks are ten years. So we're looking to replace, instead of asking for fifty thousand to replace like that quote for twenty-five thousand, we're looking, we find it better to replace over time, so that way in the event that we have to move something from one year to another and also gives us more ability to apply for grants. Because if we had the opportunity to compete over three years for federal grants and like SCBA, we applied for that SCBA grant for two-plus years, uh, we finally got it by the second or third year. So the same thing with some of these other grants and regional funding. If we space it out over time and we can offset by using federal or regional or federal money or state money, um, I, I think it, even though the replacement cycle, we can still move stuff one way or another by a year.
So, so Lo, is your question more to what belongs in the operating budget versus what belongs in a?
Yeah, that was that, I, I mean, I, that, that, that answer was very helpful as well. The decision of, of whether that gets bonded or op, gets folded and operating is for another day, right? That's another meeting? Yes, it is. These are just capital needs and how they get funded, we'll cross that bridge when we get to the next step.
Right, the, the options aren't bonding or operating, you're looking at capital.
Got it. Right, okay, got it, I, I understand, thank you.
And that essentially is gonna fall around life cycles of equipment and long-term projects based on equipment length, like the service.
So obviously, the gigantic one on here are the two additional bays. I mean, what's happening now, is there equipment outside? What's, 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 what's the realistic uh, uh, option?
So, you know, this building is, you know, fifteen, sixteen years old. And, you know, over time, we've, we've moved things around and we have stuff that is uh really should be inside and uh not outside. If we're full now and looking at uh, we're running out of space and we're storing equipment outside, uh, the next ten to fifteen years is not gonna get any better. Uh, so space, I mean, yeah, we, off-site, uh, there's stuff moved, basically. There's stuff off-site where there's staffed uh people at fire headquarters and there's stuff not here at fire headquarters that really should be part of our primary response here at fire headquarters. Time, so unlike a example, you know, trench rescue, for instance, somebody uh is working in a trench where there's tons of roadwork right now, like Boston Street, and somebody's inside and gets buried under, under dirt. We have to drive to off-site location to get equipment, pertinent equipment we need for that type of emergency.
Okay. Any further questions of uh Mike and uh Fire Department? Mike, thank you very much, Ray Ditto.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, all right. Next up, Police Department. Um, what do we have, uh, Butch Hyatt and uh?
Chris Massey.
Chris Massey, good, uh, Commissioner Welshoff still there?
He's not here, he's supposed to be on though.
Yeah. Well, I don't see him, but uh.
Send him a text.
All right. Are we early, Mary Jane, again, or are we? You're muted, Mary Jane.
Sorry, I was uh emailing somebody else too. Yeah, we're a little uh bit ahead, um, but we, Park and Rec is on for, we, we skipped Park and Rec. I got, I got Rick to come on.
Okay.
Uh, Rick and Rose, I think I saw Rose as well.
Perfect. Rick, Rose, uh, floor is yours.
Okay, just uh, I'm muting. Hope everybody's doing, doing well. So the way we uh split up the budgets this year in an effort to make it um a little bit simpler, we submitted uh, really in three different categories, uh, community center projects versus park field projects versus uh equipment. And so I don't know what way you'd like us to do it, Matt. If, if it works, I'll, I'll just do each category at a time or you want me to go like year to?
No, no, let's, we, the way it's laid out on our uh, our documentation here has uh, the community center capital improvements first, the uh parks and uh, what is I, let's see, the, just the general, the community center capital improvements, then um, looks like it's the field stuff. And then uh, uh, equipment.
Okay, so if you'll, if like, I'll do it in that, that order.
That order would be helpful, that way we can follow straight down the line.
Okay, uh, so we also tried to do it and spread things out so that we're not like heavy, heavy loading any particular year. So we tried to spread out projects and equipment uh as much as we could to try to, to balance it out some. But also in terms of priorities and needs, so we, we balanced all those things. Uh, but in the community center, um, the first one we have is twenty thousand dollars to upgrade the bathrooms. And basically that's um, this driven really by the whole COVID thing right now. And, and we know, it, it may be after the fact, I hope, I hope the COVID's done by then. But it makes sense to go with um touchless faucets uh in the bathrooms. And while we're doing it, we really should replace the counters, I mean, they're all kinda looking pretty old. Uh, they're starting to pull away from the walls a little bit and um, you know, part of it's aesthetic. But the uh hands-free faucets and hands-free soap dispenser, I think is a, an upgrade we really should do anyway. I believe the library maybe, I believe they have hands-free um, uh, equipment like that. So um, that would be the uh four main bathrooms, two downstairs, two upstairs uh that we're talking about. So that's twenty thousand. Uh, the fire alarm panel um will be about thirty-one years old at the time when we, when we uh do this. And upgrades would, would, well, obviously it's old, it's thirty-one, it'll be thirty-one years old. But um, it'd just be more effective, more efficient, more accurate if we um, uh, look at replacing that. That's the number we got uh in speaking with um shoreline security who does fire alarm panels. So for, total for twenty-one, twenty-two is seventy thousand dollars for the community center. The sidewalks for twenty-two, twenty-three, um, uh, most of the sidewalks around the building are trip hazards now. Uh, for the, for, for mostly for us, not really an issue, but don't forget, we have a lot of seniors coming. don't forget, we have a lot of seniors coming in here, and the sidewalks are all starting to sink. Uh some cases, one inch to two inches, they're sinking below the level of the curb. Um and they, they are a trip hazard. I mean, other than that, they're not cracking mostly, uh they're in pretty good shape, but it's, it's their sinking. And so um the number we got was based on uh what Janus gave us is the um square foot cost for doing sidewalks. And uh we, we just multiplied it aloud, and that's seventy-five thousand for here at the community center. Twenty-three, twenty-four, um assuming the parking lot happens next door, and this is with the assumption that the that the house would be torn down, you know, it's still a little bit up in the air right now, but we had to base it on something. And so the sixty thousand dollars is for a fifty by twenty storage building, um which I know, uh I believe Janus had written into the plans as um, you know, uh, uh, an option for uh storage there um next door at fifty-two Church Street. Uh that number I got directly from Munger Construction, uh told us a basic building, you know, you know, heat, sorry, no heat, uh electricity, uh but fifty by twenty, twelve-foot um uh height. Um and that was a, a number was at, at about um sixty thousand dollars for that. If the house uh is determined that the house has to be saved, then I guess we would, again, with your, your guidance, um put that toward renovations to the house, because obviously a lot of work would have to be done to it, you know, to make it uh usable. Um the window replacement, we started this two, three years ago, we started replacing windows. I believe we did all the upstairs, the second floor, we didn't do any of the first floor yet. Um that was part of energy efficiency, and actually some of the windows are in really bad shape. In fact, um the facilities crew has been here this week repairing a couple of them that are they're, not, not the window itself, but the window frames are cracking, they're rotting. Um and um, you know, again, they're, they're twenty, twenty-eight years old, uh twenty-nine years old right now. So um anyway, we, we did all the second floor windows, but we didn't do the, the first floor yet, so that, that's that number for that. The generator will be thirty-four years old, um we've talked with the company um that maintains it, and um they, they recommend that, you know, by then it should be replaced. So uh be thirty-four years old and twenty-four, twenty-five. Um and then the last year out, we have replacing the sprinkler heads uh in the building, kind of again, talking with uh Fire Marshal. They don't last forever, at some point they need to be upgraded and replaced, so we got a number of sixty thousand for that. I think that's it for the community, so any questions on any of those before I move on to the, to the next category?
Um Rick? Hi, um on the bathroom uh uh improvements, so the community center is almost thirty years old, or it's closing in on that. So this would be the first time that you would do any major um work in those public bathrooms?
Correct, other than place, replacing paper towel dispensers, I think we haven't done anything else. Lighting, you know, we've done some upgrades on lights, but uh we have not uh done anything else, the sinks are original, the counters. Um they, they just, they, they're, they're all, they're looking old, they um um they need upgrades, uh we, we need to do it anyway regardless of COVID. Um but it really makes sense to go with the uh, the touchless uh faucets now.
Any other questions to Rick on that section? There are none, all right, uh next up is the uh, the field stuff.
Yep, okay, Matt, so um the first one we had irrigating the um inside in the lower Cox Field. We, I believe we put that in last year's budget, and we, we were given the option to do that one or the slit drains at the high school, and we chose that one, you know, the high school project, which we did. Um and so we, we pushed back the um, the, the, the cocks. The number's a little higher, I think we originally had fifty, fifty-seven thousand, I think, maybe. Um but I, I went directly to a, a company that we've done some work with, and um I believe that's a more accurate figure. Um so it would be stripping the field that's there now, stripping all the grass off of it, hauling it away, you know, the, the debris, dumping it. Um and then installing sod, and since the two upper fields are irrigated, we already have the main line going through there, we would tap into that line and run irrigation on the uh, the lower field. So all the fields at Cox would then be irrigated. I, I think it was, I lose track of time, but I think it was somewhere around fifteen or eighteen years ago, we had um done some renovations on that field, but it never, it's never been good, you know, the, the, the grass is always kind of uh clumpy. Um it's not good soil, it's not, it's just, just never has come out real well, no matter what we do. But a lot of that is irrigation, and we found the difference at the Adams Field, when you folks approved irrigation there um about a year ago, or last fall, we put it in. Um there's a huge difference, I mean, that soccer field looks the best I've ever seen it. Um and there's still weeds and things growing in it, but it's, it's fuller, grass is coming up, and it looks so much better. Granted, there's been a lot like you, less use on it this year, there's no question about it. But the irrigation makes all the difference in the world, you can fertilize seed, do whatever you can do on these fields, aerate, irrigate, uh aerate. But without irrigation, you got that missing ingredient, and that's sort of what we're seeing at the lower Cox Field. So the upper fields are, are pristine, they've come out great, you know, since we put that irrigation in there. So we'd like to do the same with the lower field, uh to bring that up to uh, you know, a better standard like people are expecting now. Uh the drainage and fence replacement at Baldwin. Um we, we, we put that in for this year, this coming year, we're trying to coordinate with the school system. I know that um Cliff Gurnum wants to put a sidewalk uh on the when you're driving down Buller Drive on the right side, you know, there's one now that got, it kind of goes through the woods there. Uh they want to build a sidewalk along the fence, but it doesn't make sense for them to put the sidewalk in before we put the drainage in. And the drainage will go right along between the fence and the road. Um and the purpose of that is that when the water comes off the parking lot, it sheds right down that little hill and, and floods out, I shouldn't say floods out, but it saturates that upper Little League field there, and um there are times we can't even mow it, it's just so wet, and then it's a catch twenty-two, or the grass grows, we can't mow it, and then it stays wet longer because the grass is higher and the sun can't get in there. Um so there are a lot of times it's, it's not playable because of that. So uh this drains will go a long way to help that out, and uh if we can get this in this summer, then uh, early in the summer, then um Cliff should be able to get a sidewalk in there. Uh so that's a total of a hundred and three thousand for those projects for twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh twenty-two, twenty-three, um we did slit drains, uh I'm gonna say about eight years ago on the outfield of the baseball field. Uh and it worked very well, that field was, uh some springs was not playable at all. Um but that slit drain made a, made a huge difference, and we, as you know, we just did the same thing uh on the high school sod, new sod field up there, and we're seeing a big difference with it. So the, the field committee would like to extend that to the football field, that back football field. And again, that's a, a quote we got from a, a co- the same company that did the project at the high school. We got an estimate from them for thirty-eight thousand, and it's um about three hundred feet, uh linear feet of uh pipe that'd be putting in for that. Uh and that's a reduction, our original estimate, I think, was, was around fifty or sixty thousand for that. So it's a more realistic price, it's less than what we originally thought it was gonna cost. Also in twenty-two, twenty-three, um the Binder Park Building, the roof is in pretty bad shape. Toilets, kind of like we're talking about the community center, toilets there are, are not, you know, they're not, they're old. And um the building obviously gets used a lot, uh fall, uh spring, summer and fall. Um so to replace the roof, it's about ten thousand dollars with, uh the roof and fascia. Um the fascia board is rotting around the edge of the roof there. Uh partitions is about six thousand, and toilets and sink upgrade and repainting the floor uh about nine thousand dollars, that's twenty-five thousand total for the Binder Building. So total for twenty-two, twenty-three is sixty-three thousand dollars. Twenty-three, twenty-four, the Lake Quantipod Bath House. Um uh again, there we want to just replace the toilets, sinks and partitions. Uh the partitions are metal, they're, they're rusting. Um I think anytime we do partitions now, we're gonna do, we did it like we did at Jacobs Beach where they're um uh, they're like a plastic composite material, plastic of some sort, they're not gonna rust, they're not gonna corrode. Um and the ones at Quantipod are, they're metal, and they're, they're rusting. Um so that's a total of eight thousand dollars uh for that project. Uh the Adams A Little League Field, we, you know, we started a process, process with the field committee a number of years ago to um either, either every year or every other year, start replacing fields, upgrading fields. And so the next one due is, is Adams A Infield. Um i- it's already irrigated, so we'll just be ripping out the infield, then replacing it with new sod, uh regrading it also. Um and then the netting at Long Hill Park is, is a, a bit of a dilemma. Um some of the teams don't like playing in there, because they lose, they said they lose dozens and dozens of baseballs every year uh over that backstop. Um the netting is shot now anyways, it's ripped, um it's kind of falling apart, so no matter what, we have to replace it. But we, we probably have to go higher up, do something to, to try to keep those balls in, uh in the field more. Uh I tell the coaches, it's, 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 it's a function of bad coaching, they gotta teach the kids to hit forward instead of backwards. Um but uh it, the foul balls go over the, over the netting there, and uh they, they uh don't like playing there because they lose so many balls. But we have to fix it anyway, because uh I think one of the uh, the tropical storm we had in, in August, um uh it, it, a tree, a large tree fell down on the corner of that fence, and it bent a pole and knocked down some of the netting there. So we, we gotta at least replace part of the netting anyway, but um I think we can patch it to get by for a couple of years. But if we want to long-term have better use of that field, we gotta, we have to do something better, uh higher with that netting. And then twenty-four, twenty-five, um we talked about this with the commission of replacing the playscape at Jacobs Beach. There are a lot of things that are a lot more modern now. Um I believe that playscape was put in, I think around two thousand and four. Um so it'll be about twenty years old at that point. Um and with the salt air environment down there, um it, it's tough keeping up with stuff, it starts to rust. Um and there, there are new types of um materials that, you know, will, will do better in the salt environment. So that's in twenty, uh twenty-four, twenty-five, same thing at Binder Park, that's playscape is even older. Um I believe that's probably more like nineteen ninety-four vintage, and um playscapes now are just, they're a lot different from what they were back then, they're more modern, they're different challenges for kids, and um so that's what we have for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. That's all I have on, on that page. So do you want me to go on to the next one, Matt, or any questions on, on those?
Matt's on mute, so maybe if there's any questions on that section, um if any of the selectmen or Board of Finance have a question. If none, then we can move on to the next section, thank you.
Okay, uh equipment. So twenty-one, twenty-two, uh this current year, we had requested a uh a, a, a roller, a two-point-eight-ton roller, which uh was pushed out of last year's budget, so we pushed it into this, this coming year. I'm sorry, the current year budget, it was pushed out of, so we, we're requesting it for next year. Uh that would be used for specifically for rolling the lips on the infields, that's a problem where sometimes the ball takes a bad hop. You know, the edge of the field between the infield grass and the clay, and then on the other end of it, between the clay and the outfield grass. The ball, uh these lifts just, they just build up over time because of the clay and how we move clay around. Um and this uh would be um heavy enough to, to knock those lips down. Uh we have seventeen ball fields that we take care of between Little League softball and uh baseball, so uh that, that would get used a lot. It can also be used on grass fields where we get some of the uh sort of clumpiness in, in ridges that happen sometimes in those fields, especially if people play on them when they're a little bit wet and they start leaving divots and ruts. Um the roller would help us level those out and uh make it safer playing conditions. I think we could also use it uh in parking lots, it's heavy enough that I think it could help. If we um, like at Jacobs Beach, we got some major potholes down there. Uh we can scuff up those potholes and bring in some, uh some more stone, this roller would help us uh keep up with uh with that, you know, more than once a year, we can get down there every, every month if we have to do to uh try to get those potholes out, roll them out. The seven thousand dollars for the tilt trailer uh is, would be mainly for that roller, we need a trailer for the roller, but obviously we can use it for other equipment. Um the grounds master for twenty-six thousand, that would replace our two thousand Toro. Uh so that ma- that machine is um, uh will be about twenty-two years old at that point, uh twenty-one years old now, I think. So um uh, you know, it's just, it's just, it's a six-foot mower. The forty-three thousand is a, uh to replace our two thousand and five uh GU forty-two, which is a, a pickup truck. We would replace it with a, uh sort of a pickup bed, it'd be a flatbed, it would be more functional than what we have now. Um and um again, that, that'll be, what, eighteen years old, I guess, at that point. Um and then the John Deere, uh that would replace the two thousand loader we have. Uh so the total for twenty-one, twenty-two and capital equipment is one hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Twenty-two, twenty-three, the Showmobile. I think you all know, that Showmobile has been a, an amazingly wonderful piece of equipment for uh many community events. When we first got it, we thought we were gonna use it just on the green, but it's been at the beach, it's been at Bishop's, uh St. George's, um it's rented out uh to, to various groups that use it, you know, beyond what we use it for, for concerts. Graduation, and use it this year for graduation. The cost is significantly higher than what we originally thought. But I spoke with um Kim, our building inspector, who's the ADA coordinator. It comes with an option of an ADA lift, and I asked her, well, do we, do we need to have that? And she said, we really, we do need to have it, uh so that increased the cost uh I'm sorry, I don't have the number in front of me exactly how much more, but it's more because of the ADA li- lift. Uh it's more than what we originally thought, I think it added maybe nine or ten thousand dollars to it. But it'll be twenty-eight years old at that point, and um uh is it still functional? Yes, we could, it's still working right now, still worked for a couple of years, I think, but it is falling apart, uh I'm concerned about the hydraulics on it. Um uh much of the, many of the gaskets that are used to keep water out are um they're gone, they're just not there anymore, they crack, they break off, they rip. Um they're shot, and uh water gets inside, I remember there was one concert a few years ago, I opened it up, and there was no power, because water got into the outlets and we had no power. And so we, we were able to open it, um and we let it dry out for a couple hours, and uh by then the power, it dried out enough that we, we were okay. But it was uh pins and needles there for a little bit. Um the seven thousand dollars for the low-profile trailer, that's uh gonna replace a nineteen eighty-five trailer. So I think we've got our, our user use on that. Um sixteen thousand for a twenty-passenger bus, that's with the assumption that we can get a grant again, we've been pretty fortunate. Terry Buckley's done a great job of writing those grant requests. So we're, we're banking on being able to get um a grant again um in, in a couple of years uh to replace the uh two thousand and eight bus that, that right now has a hundred and sixteen thousand miles on it. Just for a reference, when we used to lease these buses from the Greater New Haven Transit District, and they don't do it anymore, so that's why we have to get them ourselves. But when we did, um they had to be traded in uh at, at uh seven years or seventy-five thousand miles, whichever came first, and so we're at one hundred and sixteen thousand. Um and it quite, of course, at that point, they need a lot of maintenance, and um it seems like every week, almost, almost every week, every couple of weeks, at least one of our buses is down for one reason or another. And we're thankful we have the four buses that we have, because if you have one down or two down, we're in trouble, so we need, we need the buses that we have, and uh as you know, they get a lot, a lot of miles and a lot of use. So total for twenty-two, twenty-three is two hundred and one thousand dollars. Twenty-three, twenty-four, uh the top dresser, uh the one we have was purchased in nineteen ninety-seven, so it's uh, it's old. Um it's, it's a tremendous piece of equipment, it, we use it quite a bit for uh adding uh topsoil or sand to the ball fields, compost, whatever product we wanna use, you can adjust it from I think a little, as little as a quarter inch up to, up to two or three inches. We've been using it on um baseball, softball fields to add clay, so it puts a nice uh even layer of clay down when we do that. The old way is we use a loader, drop a pile of clay, and then we just have to rake, rake it in uh and hope you make it level, but this, this is a much better piece of equipment, much more efficient too than our guys just using hand rakes to, and shovels to, to uh move it around. The uh twenty-one thousand, two hundred for the zero, Toro Z Turn, that replaces the two, two thousand and thirteen John Deere. It, again, it's another six-foot mower, just replacing one that we have. The uh, I think it's eighteen, I think it's an eighteen-foot trailer, that should say there, it's forty-eight thousand, that replaces our two thousand and three uh Big Tex trailer. And then the fifteen thousand, um it should be boom sprayer, sorry, it says bloom, but it's boom sprayer. It's a boom sprayer, so we hope the col- the grass will bloom. Um but uh the one we have now is, it's a nineteen ninety-five, uh it's, it's very, it's old, so it's not a, a, a the more modern ones have a nos- better, easier way for uh Tony and the guys to calibrate it, so they know to The more modern ones have a better, easier way for Tony and the guys to calibrate it, so they know to put in the right amount of. Of liquid fertilizer down or herbicide, whatever we're using on the fields, mostly liquid fertilizer. So the total for twenty three, twenty four is eighty two thousand two hundred. Twenty four, twenty five is another twenty passenger bus. That one, we made the assumption we won't get a grant. If we get the grant, then we save a lot of money, but we put in the full amount for that year at eighty five thousand dollars. And that would replace the two thousand nine, which now has one hundred and eighteen thousand miles. By then it's probably going to be over one hundred twenty five thousand miles. The Bobcat. With a forestry cutter attachment, that's a machine that we think we could use really effectively. Again, on ball fields, we could use it for snow removal if we have to, would have a little bucket on it, get it some of the hard to, hard to. Get areas that hard to get at with, with our bigger loader. But in the summer, non-winter months, we would use it for smaller jobs for removing clay, loam, you know, any kind of material. So one hundred forty thousand is the total for twenty four, twenty five. And lastly, twenty five, twenty six, replacing the F five fifty with a snowplow and a sander with a stainless steel body. That would replace our two thousand thirteen truck, so it'll be about twelve years old at that point. It's ninety five thousand dollars. We started a couple of years ago, it's more expensive to go with stainless steel body, but I think Public Works is doing this too. It costs more, but it really pays off in the long run. We've had some trucks that we had to replace the body for like nine or ten thousand dollars. After like ten years, you know, after the salt and sand and all the wear and tear they get, they start to rot out. So stainless steel is the way to go, but that does increase the cost a little bit. And then the passenger van, we have a two thousand twelve Chrysler that we use. For. If there's a senior that, we're only picking up one senior to bring them somewhere. It doesn't make sense to use a twenty passenger bus. So we use the van for that. There are some driveways that are hard to get into and out of with a bus. So we use the van for that. There's a podiatrist in town that has a hill of a driveway and it comes out onto Route seventy seven. Kind of not a good idea to back out on seventy seven with the bus, so if someone needs to go there, a senior, then we take the van for that. So. But again, it's a two thousand twelve, it'll be about fourteen years old at that point and, you know, we're anticipating we'd need replacement. So total for twenty five, twenty six is one hundred twenty seven thousand dollars. And Rose, am I missing anything? Rose is there too. Of course, she's the chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission. So I think that's, that's it on our, our projects and equipment. And then if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Rick, just a couple of questions while they're not on the twenty twenty two. The Showmobile was an expected life of, it's already got twenty six plus years out of it. You're probably going to get at least another couple. Mary Jane, why wouldn't we bond something like that at that price at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars? Wouldn't that be considered for bonding? And then the second question is, Rick, in terms of the buses, we've gotten new buses each of the last couple of years, right?
Yeah, we have one that should be coming pretty soon, actually. Yeah, I think last year we got one and we have one now that, yes, this year.
Right, so what, so what do we have for total buses, assuming the other one arrives shortly? Does that give us five or six? What have we done with the older ones?
It gives us five, one of the older, well, in the old days, we traded them into Greater New Haven Transit, but we don't do that anymore. One of we, we gave to the fire department. We don't need five, quite frankly, if we get this new one, the older one that we have now, that's a two thousand eight. The plan was to either trade it in, sell it, or if another department wants it, to give it off.
Okay. And Rick, the only question I have on twenty twenty two and raised this question last year because I know you're looking for that two ton roller. Two point eight ton roller versus the one ton roller. Yeah, how significant a difference in, you know, does it make to the fields using that much more weight? You know, we're talking about little league fields predominantly and maybe the high school, high school baseball field, right?
Yeah, about seventeen fields, Matt, overall, seventeen little league baseball softball fields that we have. And like I said, we could use it on the parking lots and we would use it on any other fields that may get ruts and clumps, you know, when people play on them, whether it's a little wet and now you got the ruts. We can use in those areas. The weight makes a big difference. When, when we were doing the irrigation project was being done at Adams. The company, Winterberry, they did that, they had a model very similar to this and Tony and I were out there, we were amazed at how. The way they did the irrigation, they pulled the pipe, so when they pull it, it kind of makes almost like a molehill, sort of, you know, it kind of goes up like that as they pull the pipe. But they went over with that roller, it's leveled right out. We were like, wow, it's like you wouldn't even know there was irrigation underneath there. It really makes a big difference. The weight is significant difference.
Okay. Anyone else with questions, Rick?
One, one quick question, all the way back to the community center capital improvements. The sixty thousand dollars for the storage building. I understood that the greatest need for that piece of property, assuming that the house is no longer there, was parking. And I also thought in the town facilities plan there, I don't know if it's all going to come to fruition, but. I think there was a suggestion about building perhaps. Storage buildings like Bilco buildings that would be shared by more than one department. So I kind of wondered what you were going to do with that storage building, would that create? Would it open up storage for another department where you're storing something now or, you know, what was the need for that one thousand square foot building or? Yeah, that's my question.
Good, good question, Sandy. So again, it's my understanding that town is interested in. Selling the Graves Avenue property, you know, the Boston Street, I should say, the old Public Works building. We have a lot of recreation supplies in there, like all of our camp stuff is in there, kayaks, canoes, you know, aquatic equipment. We have, I think, two bays, some portable stage, you know, equipment that we use sometimes in the community center. There's a lot of recreation stuff that's stored in there. We have no other place to put it. So I think that. Number one, if, even if that building is still a town building, that would free up two bays that another department could use. So if we can move all that stuff out of there, we've run out of space in the community center for a lot of our stuff here and. You know, we had talked, I think, a couple of years ago about building a shed in the far corner of our, of our property here. Which, you know, is really not a lot of space to do that, but. So, you know, if other departments needed to use some space, or I think that we could certainly do that, but. I, I think in the designs that, of the parking lot that Janice had done, in fact, I'm looking at one of them right now. She had a couple of different options and they included a storage building in the options. So I think there's some plan to do that, maybe because they know we need, we need it. But again, the bottom line is. If the building on Boston Street is no longer a town building, we need, we need to have a place to put that recreational stuff. And or if the town keeps the building, we can move that stuff out and free up those bays for equipment that, you know, between Marina, Public Works. Parks and Rec and golf course, the stuff that's in there now and facilities, give more space for everybody.
Okay, but technically, if the Boston Street building were to be go to a private concern. Some, someplace, equipment that you need would have to go somewhere, but it would not necessarily require a new building next to the park and rec building. It would have to go somewhere at some point.
Correct, but again, Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think there was, there was. Not a lot of support to just have a wide open parking lot there, which is.
Exactly.
To your point, we're right, parking was our main need there, but I think there was some, some concern of people looking at a wide open parking lot. So we, whether the house is there or we put a building up, at least it blocks the view of the, the parking lot. Am I right, Matt?
That's part of it, just the overall flow and breaking it up so it doesn't look like just a straight up, you know, parking lot over at the shopping plaza, that kind of thing. And it also, it also facilitated the access and egress pretty easily, sort of created as a buffer along those lines. But we still have some challenges with that, that property that needs to get through historic district. And one of the considerations there was the foliage, the planting and the streetscape, if you will. And clearly, you know, some kind of, some kind of facility there breaks up that. That impervious, what would normally be impervious surface, so.
Okay, thank you. That's, 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 I got my answer. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, you know, to that point though, you know, it seems to me building a, a storage facility. At that site. You know, with the historic considerations, streetscape and the rest of it, that's got to be a fairly expensive design, permanent type structure. As opposed to building a, a, I'm not going to say temporary, but perhaps less. Expensive butler type building at a different location, even if it was only for a short period of time, if, if it were to be moved. Plus, we have that other building that we're talking about down where Public Works Storage. It just seems that that's awful prime real estate to be building a new quote unquote storage building in. But, you know, I don't want to start micromanaging Park and Rec at this point, but it sounds like you've already got some issues in the works there already with historic. So I, I, you know, I, I would think that that's awful valuable real estate. And location wise and also. An expensive place to build any building that will be. That would merit that location. I mean, you can't start building a butler building down there.
No, yeah. This, this would be more of a storage facility, not a building, probably, as Rick mentioned, probably have power and, but no heat in it.
But it'd probably have to be brick and architecturally pretty and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to, like you said, we do have some challenges with this historic. That is, that option for a, a building there is one of the three design. Options that were put together, that we were sharing, not only with Rick and Park and Rec, but also with the historic district. So we have some alternatives there and, and then obviously Charlie, the pricing component comes into play as well.
Yeah, well, especially with the decision we made in the midst of making with the other property. You know, part of that logic was to have some park and rec space up there too. Right, talking about strictly storage, so even if we were to retain a partial piece of the existing building. Knowing that it's strictly temporary for storage, you know. You know, you, you've got some decisions to make there, but I would, I'd hesitate about building. Downtown like that for a storage facility, so.
Yeah, that's why you mentioned Charlie too, that, you know, not knowing what's happening with that building, if, if it's determined that the building stays, you know. But can be used for storage, we'd have to do some renovations to it, so. If you approve those funds, it could go toward that, but you know, that's a different guess. I mean, I don't know what the renovation cost would be, you know, but it would be applied to it, I guess.
Yeah, renovations towards a temporary storage building, you know, should be substantially different than a new structure, so we'll see. Okay, you got some work to do on that one. You got it.
So, quick question about artificial turf fields. I didn't see anything in the five year. Are we good for five years?
Well, I believe that's in the Board of Ed budget. We are, the stadium field is anticipated to be replaced next year. I know they have. Castle Booze Associates is doing the architectural design of it now, working on bid specs. So I think the plan is to rip up the track and the field together because the track is in pretty bad shape. But it's, it's, that's, that's going under Board of Ed.
It is, okay.
Yeah, but actually, you know what, I forgot to mention and I asked Mary Jane about this. In, in our previous, last year's five year plan, we put in, I'm going to say around seven million dollars for a new Parks and Rec, sorry, park maintenance building. But, but I know there's a whole group working on that with Public Works, Parks and Facilities. And, you know, I know you folks are talking about some property for that. So it's not in our budget anymore because somebody's already doing it. I mean, it's already being designed, I understand, or at least the study's being done. So hopefully somebody's got in their budget, but we took it out of ours because we're no longer, we're talking about just renovating or building something for Parks and Rec. Now it's a whole maintenance complex for parks, public works and facilities. So. Again, I'm not sure where that's coming from, but we took it out of ours because it became a bigger project.
Any, anything else for Rick?
Very quick question. Chipper in twenty four, was that mentioned or did I miss something?
Oh yeah, you know what, you're right, I was looking at, you're right, I had a, I had a revised budget I sent over and I looked at the wrong one. Yeah, my mistake, that should be in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just check, just checking.
Yeah. That should be in.
All right, that's it. There are no other questions for Rick. Thank you very much, Rick and Rose for attending. All right, I believe we're now at Police Department. Chief Hyatt. Deputy Chief, the newly, newly anointed deputy chief, congratulations.
Thank you.
Chairman Walsh, you on as well? You're muted, so you'll need to unmute Chairman Walsh. Still muted. There you go.
How are we doing?
Now you're doing, now you're doing okay.
All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Who's making the presentation? Is it Butch or Bob or?
I think the chief is going to roll.
All right, so in the budget for this year, I'll just go across the lines because they kind of, they kind of tie into each other, at least the first couple. For vehicles, I think you see these numbers every year in the capital budget when we put it in. And we, we put in to replace vehicles on a, on a replacement cycle on the vehicles. Based on a couple of things, mileage and idle time. A lot of, a lot of times we look at that around that hundred thousand mile marker to get rid of the vehicle. And sometimes people say a hundred thousand miles doesn't sound like a lot of miles, but the problem with the police cars is the idle time above and beyond the mileage. You know, a civilian car with a hundred thousand miles might still be in pretty good shape, at least on the drivetrain. Patrol vehicles particularly get beat up with a lot of idle time. And we see a lot of mechanical components that have to be replaced very costly. So the, the cycle for chain to those are about a hundred thousand miles, roughly four to five years for every vehicle. And that's, that's the cost for the vehicles for the patrol or the marked vehicles for each one of the five years. There's also in there, in the second year, twenty two, twenty three, is to replace one of the, our soft vehicles, our unmarked, which is with the detective bureau. That's a, that's a vehicle that is not marked up with any of the police markings, but it is, well, those vehicles we typically keep much longer. Actually, the vehicle in that year that's going to get replaced will probably be a two thousand thirteen or two thousand fourteen model year. And we'll be replacing that, they're looking to replace that in twenty two, twenty three. And the, the next line below that vehicle components, those are the components that go into each one of those vehicles that would be replaced in that, in that year. Those components are everything from lights and sirens. And actually, we budgeted in this year because of a number of items maybe coming to the end of their life cycle. Things like our, our mobile video cameras, our radios within the cars. Because typically we, we move them from car to car as we switch out the cars to save costs. At some point during the next five years, some of those components are going to be at end of life. And are going to have to be replaced with brand new equipment. So I updated those numbers from last year's capital budget to reflect some of those changes. And those are the numbers for those, the components that go into those vehicles. The, the unmarked car does get some, some components, not as many as the marked cars. But that is also included in that twenty two, twenty three line for vehicle components. Under building, two, two areas, twenty two, twenty three, we have one hundred fifty thousand, that's been in the budget a couple of years now for our roof. Talking with facilities at the roof, we've had some leaks over the, over the years, the building's, you know, twenty five years old or so. That roof is, again, one of those things that's getting to the end of life and before we start having some structural damage. Looking to probably replace that and get that, that project started next year. And before we start having some structural damage, looking to probably replace that and get that that project started next year. In in the in twenty-three, twenty-four, we have a a vehicle port. Right now, in the back of the the building, we have a vehicle port where we park our marked vehicles under. We have a number of other vehicles now that are currently out in the weather, much like the fire department talked about with some of the equipment they have and and adding the bays that they they want to add. It's similar for us. We do also have a number of pieces of equipment down at Graves Avenue with the unknown for how long that will be available. You know, trying to plan for moving our vehicles out of the weather and also a space to hopefully store some of that equipment as well if we have to get out of Graves Avenue. And actually, we had that in the line for twenty-one, twenty-two. But with COVID and everything else going on, we decided to push it out a couple of years for planning purposes and things like that.
The roof took roof took priority over that at that point.
Indeed. And that's and that's something that, like I said, we don't have, but we don't have any catastrophic failures yet. But we've had some have had some issues with ice and things like that. So it's something that we do want to 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 move forward with if we can. The next area, the weapon systems, the tasers. If you remember, last year, we 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 came to to the capital budget meetings, we had purchased new tasers and we were able to spread out the cost of those tasers over five years. We are other tasers that were about twelve years old, well beyond their their normal life, and were unserviceable anymore. So we were required to buy new ones. So you'll see there the last year, twenty-five, twenty-six, there's nothing in that space because the year before will be the last payment on that on that payment for those tasers that we already have. And we're hoping to get, you know, some a number of years after that twenty-four, twenty-five year, workable years with those those systems until they become unserviceable and hopefully not have a, you know, the cost in there for a while. The newest thing on on the capital budget that that you'll see is is for this twenty-one, twenty-two is the Avizalon server. Over the last couple of years and most recently last year, we were approved to add some camera systems to the building, both indoor and outdoor security to cover some areas, some some to cover Kalia requirements with evidence and things like that. Others to cover blind spots in the building for security purposes. The problem is, as you add cameras to those systems, the old server that we have, which is which is very old and Jay Leatherman, the IT, the public safety IT person said, you know, we we've got to move forward with a new server with more storage, particularly because we added those cameras, because the other one is at end-of-life, which you can, he said we can use as a backup. And but a new server so it can accommodate storage and retention requirements for the the video in the building. The last line there, body armor. We are on a five-year body armor replacement schedule. That's manufacturer required replacement for those that body armor. So each year, we try to replace, rather than everybody getting replaced in the same year, when body armor was originally purchased, spreading out those purchases over a a a period of time. So each year, we have, at at least a couple of those years, about six or seven vests that have to be replaced each one of those years. I updated all those numbers as well because those numbers did go up again for those vests. That's all I've got. Did I talk too fast?
No, any any question, pretty straightforward, Butch. It looks amazingly consistent with last year. The only addition is the the video server.
Right.
And how many vehicles is that? Is that three vehicles?
That's three patrol vehicles.
Gotcha.
And just a couple of things here to add to it as well. We we, I I think I remember last year we came here, we're talking about doing the hybrids and we did get one hybrid, which we supervisor vehicle now. So they're priced out as hybrid costs, which are a little bit more than the regular. The problem is trying to get those now. Once COVID hit and they shut down the Ford plants for a while, it's even hard now to get the 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 regular ones. So we're hoping to get some hybrids, but we aren't guaranteed that. So we may have some conventional ones mixed in there if we can't get the hybrids. Everybody's kind of scrambling to get those now.
Yeah. I have a a a charging station at the at the police department, the two two-twenty volt? Or are you just plugging it into a the regular standard wall unit?
No, it's it's it doesn't have to, we're not plugging it in, I mean, right now.
A hybrid hybrid.
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
So it's, even though there there are electric vehicles out there, but I think there those are cost even higher, straight electric.
Because Ford does have a plug-in hybrid as well, but probably not what you're looking for.
And the other thing is with the body armor, I know Butch has mentioned this in the past, when when he was here, we do apply for a grant for that body, those body armor every year. But it it's not guaranteed. They tell us it's not guaranteed and it only covers about half of the cost. So we budget for the whole cost and hope that, you know, much like a number of the other departments, that certain grant we we get accepted and and cut that cost down.
All right, thank you, Butch. Yeah, anything further? On Police Department. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon. Thanks.
Okay. Youth and Family Services. Now, Lou, Lou, are you running up against the timeline, too? I know Mike had to leave.
Now, here I am, four o'clock. I really should, I should check out. I mean, I could probably take in this last one, but I got to get up to Route One in in ten minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so so Youth and Family Services is very easy. They have one request. It's for next year. They, it's their the carpeting on the first floor, they were, they pushed it forward a year because they haven't had a lot of traffic this year and felt they could get another year out of it.
Ah, okay.
So that's it for Youth and Family Services. I'm trying to talk fast, so.
Thank you. So sorry to bug out. And so Mary Jane, you have, you're going to cover Major Services?
Yeah, so the last thing is is IT. We have our typical replacement each year of PCs and that should be PCs slash laptops, because many of our departments and our employees have now have docking stations with their laptops, where we for instance, the computer I'm sitting here at my mother's dining room table is the same computer I would take to work and use. So so we'll be replacing PCs and laptops moving forward. So that's just our annual request. Munis Employee Self-Service is way out in twenty-twenty-four. We have a number of updates and and new modules that we're looking to do. If you remember when we put some money aside at the end of last year, we had a a whole list of things we really want to do now. So all of those things came off of this capital list. They they were on here, but we've identified the money for them. The Employee Self-Service is the only one that's in the holding pattern. We're not ready to do that right away. The only new thing on here is the core switch up upgrade. And I hope you don't ask me a lot of technical questions about that. I did, maybe Matt knows a little bit more.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, the Aruba Core Switch is our wireless switch, which facilitates kind of a wireless connectivity into our core network.
Right. Tony told me it 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 gets the information all out to all the departments and keeps it all all together somehow. So if you needed anything more on that, that Matt can't offer, I'd have to get back to you.
I just thought maybe we were all going to go to Aruba, so.
Hopefully. See, now that's that that would have been my personal request, but that's not.
The price for all of us is good. Let's go.
Maybe we need to go to Aruba to test it out.
Mary Jane, in Rob's report from the library, he talked about six computers on loan to the town because of COVID and the rest of it. Covered in some way? Are we going to get them back to the library or what what's going to happen with that?
Yeah, we are going to get those back to the library. The laptops that we're currently furnishing to even more employees now in anticipation of another wave, we're going to be putting through our COVID line in the hopes of having those reimbursed, so they're not identified here.
Okay, so so probably none of those positions or situations are going to become semi-permanent as far as the need for those six additional machines.
Now, those and Charlie, those six, those six that we're borrowing from the library, those are pretty antiquated and really just.
But I figured somewhere the cost had to.
Yeah.
Are we going to utilize them going forward in that type? I just want to make sure that it, you know, is somewhere.
Yeah, we, you know, we, not everyone is going to have, you know, we have some budgetary constraints. Not everyone is going to have a a laptop. What we're doing is we're replacing our our normal replacement cycle. We're now going to mobile computing capacity, docking stations and and laptops, so that people can actually take them home. Mary Jane did did indicate that we made some purchases earlier this year on the anticipation that we'd get some COVID funds to cover it because of the requirement that we have folks work at home. So, yeah, and then we just also need to give credit, the Board of Education had also lent us some some older laptops, which we were able to deploy as well. So but slowly, those are coming out as we as we deploy the newer laptops that have been acquired through our normal capital project as well as the the COVID fund.
Great, okay.
Anything else on IT? Or IS, I'm sorry, Information Systems, not Information Technology, whatever you want to call it. All right, does that end our show?
That's everybody.
All right, I want to thank everybody for, A, the presentations, all the department heads and and commission folks. Also, to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finances for your participation. Please, as you go through these materials, you have questions, please forward those along to us, Mary Jane and myself. And we will, obviously, the Board of Selectmen will be, you know, probably in our January timeframe, will 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 be making some revisions to what has been presented to us or in in the form of requests. As you can well imagine, you know, like every year, the numbers that get pared down significantly. You know, I think we wound up somewhere a little north of nine hundred and fifty thousand last year. I think we're originally at one million sixteen or something or or sixty. But and now we're there's no question, we're going to have some challenges in in our upcoming budget. And, you know, unfortunately, capital is always a pretty convenient place to go. So that may well be a place where we have to go again during drastic times, so. And your any of your thoughts on what you think, you know, could be expendable or pushed off? Or questions to that effect, we'll be happy to relay them to the various department heads. All right. Well, thank you, folks. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
A second, there's a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Everyone have a wonderful rest of your day.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care.